At North Clinton Elementary, and one of the finest people that I know. He does such a good job working with Monica and our kids, but he has so much more than an SRO. He knows all the kids, their families, he knows attendance, he handles all of our truancy for us, but he is so protective of our SWC system and he is a dear friend to us. So he's just here today for a few minutes, we'll get to the Blaze Ballgame, but I wanted you to meet him because he is just such a, such an asset.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item up on our agenda for tonight is the oath of office for our elected school board members, Mayor Scott Burton.
Welcome, Mayor Burton. Congratulations on your being with us for four more years. We're very pleased to have you.
So you want to do individually?
Let's do individually.
Do you come to you or?
Johnny, stand by.
Yes, please.
One of us is gonna need a spoon and legs.
The first part you say, "I will," after I finish singing the afternoon. Please, you solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and statutes of the United States and of the State of Tennessee, and that as a school board member of Clinton City, you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected.
I will.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Clinton City School Board of Education.
Of the Clinton City School Board of Education.
The office to which I have been elected.
The office to which I have been elected.
Elected. In which I am about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
By the authority vested in me, by the citizens, stop. By the authority vested in me, by the citizens of Clinton City and the State of Tennessee, I declare these board members, you board member, to be duly elected.
Thank you.
Farley was swearing me in, and you know, I tried to have a very short sweep, so everybody, because it's different, y'all know, when you're up there, but he said, "The United States of Tennessee."
Oh.
Just threw me off, it was like, what the heck are you talking about? Lori, you want to come on up and you can take that in there?
Yes, thank you. I will get her helped here. Thank you. Hopefully I won't be on that next time.
Please raise your right hand. And again, I'll state this, say, "I will," then you can repeat after me. You solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and statutes of the United States and of the State of Tennessee, and that as a school board member of Clinton City, you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected.
I will.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Clinton School Board of Education.
Of the Clinton School Board of Education.
The office to which I have been elected.
The office to which I have been elected.
In which I'm about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
I'm gonna say this by myself now. By the authority vested in me, by the citizens of Clinton City and the State of Tennessee, I declare that you as a board member to be duly elected.
Thank you.
Kayla, I'm gonna hug you.
Don't play favorites, Scott.
You look like you're a nice woman there, don't you?
Yes, it is a little toasty.
You know the routine? You just raise your hand and repeat after, "I will," after I state this. You solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and the statutes of the United States and of the State of Tennessee, and that as a school board member of Clinton City, you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected.
I will.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Clinton School Board of Education.
Of the Clinton School Board of Education.
The office to which I have been elected.
The office to which I have been elected.
In which I'm about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
By the authority vested in me, by the citizens of Clinton City and the State of Tennessee, I declare you the school board member to be duly elected.
Aww. Love, love, love.
Come on, Curtis. They can't mess up now, you're the worst one. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and statutes of the United States and of the State of Tennessee, and that as a school board member of Clinton City, you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected.
I will.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Clinton School Board of Education.
Of the Clinton School Board of Education.
The office to which I have been elected.
The office to which I've been elected.
In which I'm about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
By the authority vested in me, by the citizens of Clinton City and the State of Tennessee, I declare you as a school board member to be duly elected.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for all you do. I know city, being a city councilman, mayor, sometimes it's, you kind of wonder why you do it, and that certainly the case, you know, the school board too, y'all put a lot of hours in, but I think we do it for a reason because we have a good heart and we want to continue to move the city forward, and we're doing that, so.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Thank you, Mayor Burton.
And Burton did say that he was gonna try to do his exit strategy before Scott Ray started any financial information.
All right, moving on, we're going to approve the agenda.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. And moving on, we have recognition for...
We do. So in January, as you know, we are gonna be celebrating School Board Appreciation Week in Tennessee, the week of January 23rd through the 29th, and so since this is a school board meeting before that week of celebration happens, our principals and students from Clinton City schools would like to come up and show our appreciation for all that you all do for our staff and students and community. So principals, come on up. Who gets the glitter this year? Does Tim Babel get some glitter this year?
No glitter.
And KK, on your first, on your first, first one back, we appreciate you.
If there's ever anything you need, just let us know.
Are y'all gonna play in the game or something?
Are you playing in the game?
They're funny, but watch out for that.
I'm so glad to swing. I want to hang this one in my car.
Okay, if you could look real fast because, because Leanne does love the gift giving.
Oh, look at South Clinton got shirts.
Wow.
Isn't that cute?
Yes.
You know, I have like hun- I have thousands of these, I've kept them all these years. I do, I read them.
You never know what it can remember.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all so much.
And we are gonna excuse our principals at this point because we have some basketball dancers and some cheerleaders that need to make it to the student ballgame. Officer Mavill, we appreciate you being here today. We're gonna let you make sure everybody has a wonderful time at the ballgame tonight. So I will see you there in just a few moments.
Thank you all very much. All right, moving on to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our financial report for October and November.
I handed out a paper copy of the November financial statement. We have in the board agenda October and November, but November encompasses October, so we'll just go over November if that's okay. Page two, I printed on both sides, you can see that we spent $650,000 more than we've taken in in revenue. That's primarily due to property tax, and property tax will start being recognized well in the month of November, December, January, February are the big months, and so we'll catch up. That's just a timing issue. Federal projects, we've spent $169,000 more than we've collected, that's a timing issue. Remember the reimbursement grant? We spend the money, we request it from the federal government, and then we get the money. It's a little slower, a little more like the timing of our accounts receivable. It's about a month and a half of expenditures, and I like it to be just at a month. I don't like other people having our money. I don't want our money. On the last page is the cafeteria fund, and you can see that we have, we've earned $62,000, we have revenues in excess of expenditures. That's a little bit ahead of where we normally are, and I'm a little bit surprised that we've done so well because we've kind of gone back to student payments and back to quote unquote "normal," and I suspect it'll slow down when the economy slows down, but I'm pleasantly surprised. So we just need to keep plugging away there to continue that trend. Any questions?
You may see as come the boiler at South Clinton, I know I emailed you all and told you that that went out during our cold spell that we're having to replace. Scott is working with the State Department right now because that provides all of the heat to the cafeteria.
Hot water.
Hot water, yes, hot water. So he is getting, working with the State Department to see if we could offset the cost of that boiler from our cafeteria fund, so this is a good example.
And we got approved.
You got approved, okay. So this is a great example of why we want to have a hefty fund balance in our cafeteria because that's gonna pay for the boiler that normally would've come out of our GP fund.
Correct.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding our financial reports for October and November? Great job, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the October and November financial reports as presented. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
KK, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Babel?
Yes.
Lori Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis is now.
Yes. Motion carries. Isn't it nice to hear KK's name?
And we got our last name right this time. We're trying, Rick.
All right, well, moving on, Mr. Ray, well, tell us about budget amendment number two.
There's a memo that describes the, what I would call material amounts in the budget amendment. All in all, we're diving into fund balance by $66,000, and that probably won't be realized at year end. It's just not very efficient to go through every line item and pull a little bit of extra money that lies in them to fund every single budget amendment. So for an efficiency standpoint, I just pull it out of fund balance. If I know that we have a line item that has excess funds that's significant, I do pull it out of there first. So we have a Save Schools grant, that's the first bullet. We've spent a little bit more money on some projects related to that grant than the grant funds. It's gonna be funded from fund balance, the excess. The second bullet, we've got some donations that we increase in donations compared to what we budgeted, that's an increase in revenue, but we also are doing a lot more well-rounded this year, so we have some uniform expense and equipment expense, so that offsets. We did have an increase in staffing for special ed assistants. That's being funded by a reduction in other areas and salaries and partially in fund balance. We have an increase in contracted service for an apta- apte-
Aptegee.
Sorry, tongue twisted on that one. And the last bullet is pretty much a switch in how we're paying for custodians. We're using Express Temporary Services for a lot of our custodial staffing. It's been very successful for us, and the way we're funding that is a decrease in what we budgeted for custodial positions. It's really a break even for us, whether we pay them as an employee or we use them through Express, when you consider taxes and benefits. Any questions on all the GP budget amendments? The federal projects is just one small amendment to decrease in allocation for Title I, and again, that's what they're gonna allocate to us from the government, and it's a reimbursement grant. No budget amendment at this time from the cafeteria fund. I know there's a lot going on there, so feel free to...
Okay. Does anyone have any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray concerning budget amendment number two? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number two as presented. So moved. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
KK, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Babel?
Yes.
Lori Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis is now.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have some new policies and some, I guess, updated policies that we need to approve on first and second reading.
Correct. So three of these policies are just policy updates recommended by TSBA. Annually, they do an audit of all of our policies to make sure that we've captured all of the updated changes in line with Tennessee Code annotated. They suggested that a few of these be, be updated. The Director of Schools Recruitment and Selection, Tim asked if I was gonna share something with you tonight, and no, I'm not. It's just, it's just a policy update, but they have moved from like a two-thirds vote required to a majority vote. So while that is in TCA, we just needed to clean that board policy up. The big one that we're changing with us that we're gonna talk about a little bit later, I'll give you a little bit more information, but as we're looking at increases in student enrollment and all of the housing developments and things that we're projecting to come in, we talked at board retreat about how we keep our system under 1,000 kids, which is gonna be extremely important with our new TESA funding. And so we are making some changes with regards to our transfer and registration process to try to just give us a little bit more time to give city kids first priority over entrance into our district before, before, so that we can see exactly how many kid, transfer kids that we can accommodate. So this policy just basically is backing up our official transfer window. It did go until July 15th, which really didn't give us a lot of time to let parents who wanted to transfer, didn't really give them a lot of time to know if they were gonna get in or out, but it, it put us real close to seeing the whites of eyeballs before we were able to finalize class roles. So I'm making a request that we make that and move it up to May 15th, so what the, what the new transfer application would be for out-of-city students, it would start on April the 3rd and then end on May 15th, and then any parent who wanted to fill out a transfer after May 15th would have the right to do so, but they would be put on a waiting list to make sure that we have enough spots for city kids. And so that is really all that this policy is changing. We did have to change some processes to accommodate for this, of which I will go over. Processes don't have to be approved by the board, but I still wanna go over them with you and make sure that you all are okay with those changes. Then the alternative education one, the only change in that one is just, they reworked it to basically, we could, we do not have to provide alternative education to students who make a direct threat to a teacher or a school, so it tightened up a little bit on direct threats that are made by students. And then the last one, the last policy is just on special education students, and that's just making sure that we're compliant with isolation and restraints. So minor changes to all of those.
All right. Any questions or comments regarding those policies? I'll entertain a motion to approve policies on first and second reading as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to information.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and hand out the director report because this, if we look at the schedule that I put at the bottom here, that's gonna capture basically everything that are in our two new procedures that we have created to kind of capture our new transfer and registration process that we are going to try this year. So I'll kind of walk you through the dates, just, this is gonna be a very new process for us in Clinton City schools, and I'm sure that you may get some questions from some, both city residents and county residents regarding these changes. So what we're gonna do on February the 1st is we are going to start setting kindergarten registration appointments. We normally do this and we allow, in the past, we have allowed, whether you are a county child or a city child, you could go ahead and make a registration date and come and register. So we were requiring transfer kids to come in, they would pay their $25 registration fee, they would fill out all the paperwork, but then they wouldn't find out until the middle of July if they were gonna be accepted or not. And when they come in and they register and fill out paperwork, the expectation is that you're gonna get in, and so we are gonna just make our kindergarten registrations for city kids only this year. And so we'll start taking those appointments, and if you drop down, then on March 27th, 28th, and March 30th, we will hold at each one of the schools a kindergarten registration roundup for city kids only. And then that's gonna give us a good picture of how many city kids we think are coming, and that will give us a better picture of how many transfer kids we can actually accept. Then the new state law, of course, on March the 1st, we'll start our governor's pre-K registration. That is the same as it's always been, they can come to central office and fill out a registration, or they can fill it out online and bring it in. A new law, which is called the Open Enrollment Law, that goes into effect this year, this gets very confusing because if you read the law and you read, I had to rework the, our policy, because they're saying in the law, transfers, but what they mean is zone exceptions. What they mean is transfers within district. So we call, if I'm at North Clinton and I need my child to go to Clinton Elementary because I work at the courthouse, that's a zone exception because you are a city student and you want to go to another city school. So we call that a zone exception. If you live in the county and you wanna come to the city, we call that a transfer. The state law is saying the word transfer, meaning zone exceptions, so it gets really confusing. But what the law states is what they were, the intent of the law was they were trying to open it up to some of your larger districts, to where if I go to a low-performing school in a district, I have first dibs on going to a more successful school in the district before a count, before an out-of-district kid gets that spot. So the intent of the law is, is not bad, but what we are required to do is to predict how many zone exception spots we have in each grade level in each school, and I have to post that on the website two weeks in advance before the transfer window opens. So on February the 14th, we will post on our district website how many projected openings we feel like that we could take from in-house zone exceptions, and then there will be a zone exception transfer time period from March the 1st to the 30th to meet the requirements of that law. That is giving our city kids first dibs on attending whatever school is most convenient for them. In Clinton City, we usually accommodate, we rarely ever are not able to accommodate a city kid's parent request, so this really is not gonna change a lot of what we do because we give them priority anyway, but it just kind of sets that aside as a special time for city residents. And then we'll move into the transfer for, out of, out of city transfers, that will start then on April the 3rd through May the 13th. And then what we will do is we will notify those parents by June the 1st if their transfer has been accepted or not, and we will do a separate registration date on the 15th and 16th of June for transfer students.
Do you know how many transfer students we have currently?
Currently, we are at about, we're, we're close to 30% transfers.
Really?
Yeah.
Do you see that decreasing next year?
I see it's gonna have to decrease because our enrollment, our city enrollment is going up, and we've gotta catch you up on some of the conversations, but with the new TESA funding, we are getting about $400,000 extra because we're considered a small school district, but the minute that our district goes over 1,000 students, we lose that small school. So if I enroll and my enrollment hits 1,001 kids, I lose almost half a million dollars of funding. And so with this new funding formula, because so much of the funding was CTE-based and so many of the districts who have high schools really reap the benefits of this new funding a lot more than we did, we are gonna have to be very intentional about keeping our enrollment under 1,000. And frankly, we need to with the space that we have. I mean, we would be out of space if we get it above that mark, but as you can see in my director's report, right before Christmas, we were at 9:50, and we lost 15 kids over Christmas break, but we were at 9:50 and then including our pre-K, which isn't included in funding, we were at 9:85. So we don't have a whole lot of room to play with right now, so if some of these subdivisions come to fruition, and we, we know the daughter rebuilding's happening, so we're gonna get some kids at Clinton Elementary for that, and Clinton Elementary's busting right now, we're at five, what, 565 kids there. So I do foresee that we will have to route some of our transfer kids to South and some other schools to accommodate them if they wanna stay with us. So hopefully, this is gonna just help us take care of city kids first and then have a real clear picture of how many transfer kids. And of course, we want to accept as many transfer kids as we can, but not at the expense of our city kids. And so that way, we can walk into the 1st of June and have a pretty good idea of what our role is going to, roles are gonna look like for fall. So any questions on that? Because that is very significantly different than anything that we've done before, but I think it's about as clean as we can get it. So those are what the two policies state. We, on zone exceptions and transfers, we do make the parents sign that they are a- We, on zone exceptions and transfers, we do make the parents sign that they are aware that it's all based on space and programming. We make them sign that they, we have a right to deny that if due to behavior concerns, attendance concerns, or parental concerns. And honestly, that is the number one reason we deny transfers is because of parental behavior. If they're not supportive of the high expectations of Clinton City schools and our policies and procedures, then we have the right to deny the transfer. And then we just put in there that they are aware that we do not offer transportation. So they sign that annually. Once a zone exception, just for your information in case you're asked, we did make this change. We used to send letters to every single zone exception every single year stating whether it was approved or denied. And we're gonna take care of our city kids, so we have stopped doing that, and they fill it out one time, and if it is approved, then it continues to be approved unless we have, they, unless it's an attendance behavior or parent philosophy of which we would let them know that it had been revoked, but they can assume that it is going to continue unless they hear from us otherwise. That doesn't keep parents guessing every year. So any questions for me on those two new changes? Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Anything else? All right, hearing none, I'll declare this-
No, 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 I do have my, I do have my, I did have my director report.
Oh, well, I had it up here. I thought you wouldn't have-
I'm sorry, I went over the bottom. I didn't go over the top. I thought you were gonna say the information first. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, we're-
Too late, Kelly.
That's right.
No, 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 I'm not done yet. I'm not done.
I almost, I almost, I almost made contact, but it wasn't quite. All right, so February the 9th coming up will be our next school board meeting. We do have what used to be the day on the Hill coming up, February the 16th and 17th. The disclosure for your election is coming up due on the 31st of January, if you can get that in. And that is the information except for the director's information.
Well, I almost have gone over everything. There's just a couple of more things before we leave. Just to remind, I think everybody said that they were available on the 27th from 12:30 to 3:30. We'll just meet probably in the guidance room at Clinton Elementary School, but we will meet somewhere in Clinton Elementary School that day. And so everyone said that they could come, so we'll just do a work session, and we're gonna update KK just kind of on what we've been doing for the past year. And then I have some architect information that I would like to share with you all on a project Scott and I have been working on. Then you may, and I wanted to kinda hit this a little bit just in case you hear from anybody about third grade retention, but at this point, we are having to be forward as if this is not going to be changed. We are getting some, some feelings. Cameron Sexton was on Inside Tennessee on Sunday where he said he was aware some changes needed to be made, and that he would be supportive of us using multiple measures and using benchmarks and things that we collect during the year to assist with that. I do know that Representative Reagan has spoken to Delancey Toss and is aware, he has heard from many of our parents about the concerns of this. And so hopefully, something is gonna happen, but we have to, we have to move forward as if it is not. So we sent home mid-year data, and with every third grader who is still showing that they are at risk for falling under the third grade retention law, we have gone ahead and requested that they register for summer school so that we can start that programming of how many classes and how many, how many teachers that we have. Obviously, if this law gets revised in some way, we will go back to the drawing board. But at this point, summer school will be held at North Clinton again because we will be doing a sewage project at Clinton Elementary School, and so it will run from May 29th to June 30th. The biggest tweak is that when they decided this in the extraordinary session, they only approved funding for K through 3 for two years, but they approved the funding for rising 4th through rising 8th grade indefinitely. So our question to them was, it defeats the purpose if third grade is your, is, if that's our, if that's our goal, why are we waiting till they fail to provide the interventions? Why would we not fund the, the 1st through 3rd and try to prevent this from happening? And legislators are now seeing that. I think now that it's here, we're hearing from legislators, wow, that makes a whole lot more sense. So as of now, we will just be having summer school for rising 4th through us, rising 7th grade for four weeks unless this law is changed. And if the law is changed, certainly, we will, we would love to add back. So there is some talk that they might flip-flop that and take it away from the upper grades and put that money and funnel it into primary. So a lot of this third grade retention, summer school is still very up in the air depending at what happens with General Assembly, which did open yesterday, Rick, or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so it is open. We are projecting between about 300, 350 bills that affect education to be filed, so we will be watching all of those closely as some of them fail quickly and some of them move through. So I will certainly keep you all updated. Any questions for me?
Yes.
Yes.
Under this third grade retention law, how many letters did you have to send out? Like, how many kids?
Sixty-six.
Is that-
A lot.
It's a lot.
A lot. Now, I will tell you that we were overly cautious. If they showed up on their iReady as early 3rd grade, we normally would not be super, super alarmed at that, but we kind of over-identified at this point just because we didn't want any parent to be caught off guard. And so we probably did a little bit of over-identification. Some of those won't meet the criteria because they've been retained before, or they're receiving special ed services to address reading. So some of them will, you know, obviously not. And then we are hearing from the state, which is promising if it stays the way it does, if the parent can appeal if the child was above the 40th percentile on their universal screener, which for us is EZCBM. So there will be a subset of kids that fall into the approaching category on TCAP, which knocks them into the retention law, but the parents will be able to appeal based on their EZCBM score, and that will be approved. So we will, but when we sent home those letters, we're not taking into account any of that just because we, we want parents to just be aware if there's a chance at all. We don't want anybody to be caught off guard.
What does that appeals process look like? Is it complex? Is it simple?
It is not. It's gonna involve the schools. So the law says that the school cannot appeal, the parent has to appeal. But like, the parent has to have the student ID number that only the school has, has access to, so there's gonna have to be some communication. It is online, and I will tell you that it is relatively simple because the state, we have to submit all of our universal screeners to the state, so they already have that information. So they'll be able to pop in the student's ID number, look and see what their universal screener is, and approve. This is the exact, if you remember when I went down to fight in the spring with legislators, this is the exact thing we asked legislators to let us do at the district level. We've got universal screener data, let us do this. We've got it. Don't make us appeal to the state when we've got the information right here. It could, you know, you can tell us what threshold to use, and it was denied, but that is exactly what they're doing at the state level. So you can appeal for that, and then you can appeal for a catastrophic event, and they're considering that like a medical condition, a death in the family, your house burned down, anything like that, you could, you could apply for it at that. So what we intend to do is we have to offer a retake option for everybody who is in the below basic and approaching, a retake chance for them to come and retake the test to show proficiency. So when we offer that retake test, we're gonna set up computers of kiosks for parents and then assist them in sending in the appeal. We'll know immediately if they, I mean, I can look at a parent and say, your child was above the 40th on the universal screener, do an appeal, because it'll go through. And so we plan to hold those conversations with, with parents, and then have an opportunity to help them do the appeal.
So you have no way of knowing this, but can the state handle all of those, a number of appeals they're gonna get and do it in a timely manner so that people know if their kids are gonna move on or not?
They, at this point, are saying they'll work through as fast as possible, and that's all we've got. But I will tell you that the news reported, I think Knox County is looking at either 25 or 2,800 kids just in Knox County alone.
I think we should let the legislators who voted for this handle that process.
Well, the frustrating thing is, and you all know this, that we have the data, and this is the exact, their appeal process is exactly what we fought to make happen in the spring, and they wouldn't let us do it, but they'll let the state do it.
Let them.
So, yeah.
See how that goes.
But they are hearing from parents. We are, that, that is the general consensus, and the parents are doing what we need them to do because they're gonna listen to the parents a lot more than they're gonna listen to us, so. That's all I have. I'm officially done, Dr. Bible.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right, so now we can head over to the Blaze game if you need to.
Edge the Blaze.
I'll declare this meeting adjourned.